Hey, it's Randy.
Hi, Randy.
Hi, guys. How we doing?
Not glad we're here.
Good.
There's been the option to leave the meeting if I know it's recorded. Okay, I'll say.
Didn't you do that at the last meeting?
I did. All right, we got another crowd tonight.
This is our first Zoom Planning Commission hearing, so we're excited to share it with all of you. Thanks for welcoming us here.
No problem. We'll get started in a minute. Yeah, this is not our first rodeo at this, so it has its own interesting, unique elements, for sure.
It sounded like you didn't skip a beat, though.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're used to it by now. It's always funny to try to close the public hearing on Zoom.
Especially with this chair.
Hey, Randy, I'll give you the administrator role.
No, thank you.
Actually, Jake is the only one with these administrative. You cut us all off. If he gets tired, he just shuts down the mics.
It's a good thing. I like to hear everyone talk.
That was a bus driving over us, I think.
Yeah. A little sarcasm.
We're waiting for a couple more commissioners.
Yes, I don't see Commissioner Naransik on yet, and we know that Commissioner Chenelli will not be here tonight.
That's right. I guess you're right. He emailed from that.
We do indeed have a quorum. I have 6:03 PM. Chair, I'll leave it to you to call the meeting to order.
Yeah, I'll give until 6:00, 6:05. I know he comes out of a meeting right into this. Nancy, we're gonna start with a roll call, and you're gonna have to have your mic off, so just wanna make sure you know how to do that. Or mic on.
Okay, now I think you can hear me.
There you go.
Yes.
Yay. Thank you. I gotta figure out these modern gadgets.
Yeah, I just gotta make sure you're ready to vote and things, so let's see what we got here. All right, I'll go until 6:05, Stephanie, and then we'll light it up.
Sounds good.
I was gonna use my Maui pictures in rotation for my backdrop, but I said, nah, 360 slides might be too many.
No kidding.
Maybe under Commissioner's comments later.
Yeah, we'll stretch the meeting out a little bit, guys. I hope you don't mind.
Yeah. Move to close.
You're always quick on that one.
Yeah.
All right, we got 6:05, so we have a quorum, so I'm gonna kick us off, and then when Perry gets there, we'll just make sure he knows where we are on the items. And we'll start on the first. Go ahead, and I'll open the meeting. I brought my gavel again. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the Planning Commission meeting of May 26th, and we'll start off with a roll call. Stephanie?
Thank you. Chair Lane.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Chenelli is excused. Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Lerner?
Here.
Commissioner Naransik is not here as of the moment.
All right, all right. Then the item number two is public comments, and what we do on the public comments is we open up the microphone for anyone who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda. Sometimes that leads to highlighting something that's going on in the community, or giving us feedback about something that's been approved before, or just making us aware of something that might be coming. So with that, I'll open up the public comment section for items not on the agenda. Is anybody interested in talking about something that's not on the agenda? I'm watching for hands raising or mics to come off. I don't see anybody, so I'm gonna close the public comment section of the agenda, and next we'll go to approval of the minutes.
I moved.
All right, yeah, I had a quick question on that, just from a standpoint of the procedural thing on that, Randy. There's a section of the minutes you can't be part of because you weren't in the room, right? And so Stephanie, I wanna know how do we approach that? Do we just wait for the minutes until Perry gets here? Or can we just go ahead on the overall, in the way it is?
We can go on the overall, the way that it is.
All right, good. So Randy, your motion to accept the minutes, and I'll second. And the only one commented is for Stephanie or Jake to, for next time, not this time. You know, I wanna make sure Commissioner gets credit for deciding to do an ethical thing. Randy had, the minutes of the last meeting, Randy had stepped away so to avoid conflict. He knew something about the school that we were talking about, and he chose not to be there for the vote. And so technically, he was absent, but it was absent for good cause, so I didn't want him not, he got a ding for being absent for a vote. But also somehow, if we were to say he left meeting to avoid conflict management or something like that, it would go on the record that he took an.
Well, it's nice of you.
It's just, we don't have to change it now, but I just consider it for future references. That is a way to clarify that the Commissioner did the right thing. Without a motion and a second, we'll have a roll call on the minutes, please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Chenelli's excused. Commissioner Lamb?
Well, now that he said that, am I allowed to vote?
Yes.
Yes, all right, yes. Here, yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
And Commissioner Naransik is absent.
All right. Right, with that, then we'll start the public comments, and I'll just go over a little bit of the procedures, so everybody's on the same page. And if anybody comes in late, I'll go through this one more time, so that everybody knows that we're gonna give people an opportunity to speak. The way we start this is that we open an item, and then a staff member, either Stephanie or Jake, gives us an overview of the elements of the issue before us, and they run through a number of different information that'll be useful. Then we go ahead and open the hearing, and we start with the applicant or their applicant's representative. And then we make sure that everybody gets to be speaking, and then anyone who wants to speak on the topic is next. And then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action as appropriate. And we'll do that on every item, and as I mentioned, I'll highlight it if somebody comes on, so we're on the same page. With that, we'll start with item number 4A, and that's a heritage tree removal permit and a tree protection zone exception at 50 feet, Melanie Lane in Atherton. We'll start with Stephanie. Are you on this one?
This will be Jake.
All right, Jake, you're on this one. Go ahead.
Thank you. Item 4A is a request for a heritage tree removal permit, also known as an HTR, and a tree protection zone exception, otherwise known as a TPZ exception, for the property at 55 Melanie Lane. The requested heritage tree removal is for two Heritage Coast redwood trees, trees 816 and 817, and they requested.
Jake, would you point them out on the map, just to make sure everybody's on the same page?
Yes, for the trees 816 and 817, for the heritage tree removal, are located in the rear, the back corner of the property where my mouse is. I will zoom in as they are a little bit hard to see on this site. You'll see 817 here to the left and 860 right. And then the tree protection zone exception is for three Heritage Coast redwoods trees, trees 847, which is the one to the far right, 848, which is just left of the tree 847, and 850, which is two trees over from 848. Tree 849 is located here, but does not require Planning Commission approval this evening. The heritage tree removal and tree protection zone exceptions are being requested in order to allow for the development of a site to include a new two-story main residence with a basement, a detached garage, pool house, and a pool in a minor extension of the existing driveway. Starting first with the heritage tree removal, the applicant requests the removal of two Heritage Coast redwood trees, trees 816, a 16.25-inch coast redwood tree, and tree 817, a 24 and 1/2-inch coast redwood tree. Both trees are located at the rear-left corner of the lot, just beyond the extent of an existing driveway, and the applicant requests the removal of the two coast redwood trees for the purpose of constructing an extension of the existing driveway to allow for a fire truck turnaround area, thereby bringing the existing non-conforming driveway into compliance. Existing driveway conditions do not meet the minimum standards of the Menlo Park Fire District for adequate fire truck turnaround. And the applicant further indicates that due to the site's topography, existing conditions, and other heritage trees on site, it is limited in viable alternatives that would allow for compliant driveway fire turnaround area without the removal of the two heritage trees. Neither of the two heritage trees were determined dead nor dangerous by the Town Arborist. Thus, the application is referred to the Planning Commission for consideration of removal per the provision of the town's heritage tree ordinance. An arborist report prepared by Urban Tree Management indicates tree 816 being in fair health with fair-to-good structure, and tree 817 being in fair-to-good health and to have fair-to-good structure. The Town Arborist has visited the site and reviewed the materials and has prepared a memo. She indicates that she has denied the removal at a staff level since both trees are neither dead nor dangerous. The applicant has proposed a replanting plan that consists of four 36-inch coast live oaks to be planted near the rear property line at the back-left corner. And the Town Arborist has reviewed the proposed replanting plan and finds it to meet the heritage tree ordinance requirements required for replanting. The Town Arborist is unable to recommend the approval, oh, excuse me, so the Town Arborist is unable to recommend approval of the trees for they are neither dead nor dangerous. However, planning staff is supportive of the removal of the two coast redwood trees from this property due to alignment with criteria necessary for the Planning Commission to consider, as indicated in Atherton Municipal Code 8.10.040D, and as stated in the staff report. The requested heritage tree removal will bring an existing legal non-conforming condition with no other demonstrated alternatives into compliance with the fire requirements. As such, it is plain staff's professional opinion that the removal of the heritage trees would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan and zoning ordinance. Moving now to the tree protection zone exceptions. The tree protection zone exceptions are being requested to accommodate the construction of the new main residence, and all three trees are located between the existing driveway and the front-left of the existing and proposed main residence. The town's heritage tree ordinance guidelines defines a tree protection zone as the designated protection area sufficiently large enough to protect a heritage tree and its roots from disturbance and/or damage. This area is to be free of construction and other disturbance activities unless otherwise allowed, as adopted in the town's tree preservation guidelines and standards and specifications document. In the case of these three heritage trees, the required tree protection zone is 10 times the tree's diameter, which equates to a tree protection distance of 25 feet 5 inches for tree 847, 20 feet for tree 848, and 32 feet 1 inch for tree 850. The tree protections exceptions, the tree protection zone exceptions are being requested down to the buffers between 3.2 times and 7 times the tree's diameter, resulting in the varying reduced tree protection zone distances of 18 feet 5 inches, 5 and 3/4 inches for the residents at the basement level, and the above-ground structure for tree 847, 13 feet 8 and 3/4 inches for the basement level, and 8 feet 1 and 1/4 inch from the above-ground cantilevered encroachment for tree 848, and 19 feet 10 and 1/4 inch for the residents at the basement level and the above-ground structure for tree 850. The project arborist prepared an arborist report and observed the health and form of each tree to be fair-to-good, and the applicant team dug an exploratory trench and expects there to be very little root disturbance. The applicant team has highlighted that the proposed construction of the home has been modified to set the basement back further to minimize impacts to the tree roots, and that the structure above ground will be cantilevered over the root zone of tree 848. The project arborist further opines that the current home represents an 8.6% encroachment into the eight times TPZ, and that there be zero root loss because the trees came in at the same time as the existing home. He noted that the basement represents a new encroachment of only 2.7% of the eight times TPZ, and would be minuscule with no anticipated negative impacts to the trees. As it relates to the above-ground structure, the project arborist indicates that the proposed new impact of the above-ground portion of the home would be a 3.7% encroachment into the eight times TPZ, and since the cutout portion of the home is cantilevered, it would have no in-ground impacts to the tree. The project arborist finds this to be acceptable under ISA guidelines, especially for a tree species with a high tolerance for root encroachment, as he indicates that redwoods are. Should the TPZ exceptions be granted, the project arborist included this series of recommendations to be implemented and have been included as conditions of approval. The Town Arborist has visited the site and has reviewed the materials. She notes that all three trees to be mature, healthy, and structurally sound. She further states that redwood trees are rated as high in good tolerance to construction impacts. The Town Arborist indicates that the specifics of the application request for tree number 847, relative to review of all submittal materials and onsite inspection, are found to support the criteria section 2.2B2B of the Heritage Tree Guidelines for Planning Commission Consideration of Approval, which states if the species is tolerant tolerant of construction based on species, health, size, and age, from Metheny and Clark tolerance chart. Tree number 847, a coast redwood, is requesting a TPZ exception down to seven times the tree's diameter for the main residence. The Town Arborist has determined that she can recommend a TPZ of seven times for the main residence because of the existing house and five-foot crawl space. She can recommend that the basement OSHA-cut shoring and structure at that seven times. The Town Arborist indicates that the specifics of the application request for trees 848 and 850, relative to review of all submittal materials and onsite inspection, are unable to be found to support the criteria section 2.2B2B of the Heritage Tree Guidelines. Tree 848, a coast redwood, is requesting a TPZ exception down to 5 and 1/2 times the tree's diameter for the basement, and 3.2 times the tree's diameter for the above-ground structure. The Town Arborist is unable to recommend the TPZ exception, as requested, and indicates that she could recommend a six times the TPZ for the basement, and no less than three times TPZ for the above-ground structure. Tree 850, a coast redwood, is requesting a TPZ of 6.2 times the tree's diameter for the main residence, and the Town Arborist is unable to recommend the TPZ exception, as requested, and indicates that she could recommend an eight times TPZ for the basement, and no less than six times the TPZ for the above-ground structure. Planning staff finds that the TPZ exception request with recommendations for the heritage redwood tree, tree number 847, to be a designated protection area sufficiently large enough to protect the tree and its roots from disturbance and/or damage, combined with related mitigation, as supported by the Town Arborist. Further, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve TPZ exceptions for tree 848 and tree 850, with the condition that future plans be revised to demonstrate no less than a six times TPZ for the basement, and three times the TPZ for the above-ground structure for tree number 848, and a TPZ of eight times for the basement, and six times for the above-ground structure for tree number 850, to allow for a designated protection area sufficiently large enough to protect both of these trees and their roots from disturbance and/or damage, combined with related mitigation, as supported by the Town Arborist. This condition is included in the draft tree protection zone exception certificate, attachment 1 of the staff report. Please note, the applicant team has worked to mitigate for impacts related to the request and disagree with the recommendation as it pertains to conditions 5 and 6 of the draft tree protection zone exception certificate. As such, the applicant is here on the call today and has prepared a presentation for consideration by the Planning Commission supporting their request. Notice of this application was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and to date, the town has not received any public comments. The applicant team is present and available to answer questions, as is staff. Thank you for your time. I yield back to the chair.
Right, and any questions? I've got a couple of questions, but anybody else have any questions before I jump in? Jake, I wanna clarify, so in our packet, we have a motion and an alternative motion, but neither one of them sound like the request of the applicant. Is that correct?
Attachment 6, the alternative motion, would be what has been requested by the applicant.
And so we did make it to the agenda, and okay, I was thinking it didn't make, I thought it was something different that they'd asked for than this. Okay, and this went out during the, during the posting, so neighbors knew about this alternative or not?
Yes, the alternative, the alternative draft certificate, as included in the staff report, was published last week with the rest of the application materials.
Okay, good, because if it weren't, I would be telling people that, you know, we can't be voting on something that the community doesn't have a chance to look at. So I'm glad it went out with it. All right, and a key difference is?
I can further clarify that the town has provided a public notice two weeks prior to the meeting, notifying the neighbors within a 500-foot radius of the consideration of the Planning Commission site.
Okay, and can you, so I can have like a graph version rather than the dialogue version of this? On the number on the trees and the comparison of the requests versus the recommendation of staff? So it's 848, and it's seven times, is that correct? 847 is seven times. The staff is saying seven times, and the applicant is asking for seven times, correct?
Correct.
And 848, staff is saying six times, and the applicant is asking for 5.5.
That is correct for the above-ground structure. I'm sorry, for the below-ground basement level, the applicant is requesting a 5 and 1/2 times the TPZ, but the town is recommending a six times. And then at the above-ground structure, the applicant is requesting a 3.2 times the tree protection zone, while the town is approving that and recommending it at three times.
So in that instance, so we're basically talking about the difference on 848. Is that correct? Because if they're asking for a bigger request on 848, that's not an issue, but the issue comes down to 848 on ground. Is that correct?
Yes, the recommendation by the town for 848 is different for the above-ground structure.
All right, the reason I bring that up is that we wanna be able to focus on what the biggest request difference issue is. And at 3.2, when we're recommending 300, it's not an issue, basically, for the staff, right?
Correct.
All right, so it's okay to go more, and then we're not gonna have an issue with that. So we're basically talking about the issue around 848 when we hear this presentation. Is that correct?
And 850.
Correct, and 850.
What's the number on 850? What's our recommendation on 850 versus the request? 850 is eight times versus 6.2, correct?
Correct, so 850 has a, excuse me while I refer to the staff report for the exact numbers here. For the basement level, they've requested a 6.2 times the TPZ exception, while the town is recommending an eight times the TPZ exception.
All right.
And then at the ground, at the above-ground level, they're requesting 6.2 times, while the town is recommending six times. So you're, the Planning Commission consideration is for the requested basement level tree protection zone exception request.
All right, I'm just trying to make sure we're not running, that we're really focusing on what the big discussion points will be, and that'll be 848 and 850. Is anything else, even though there's differences, there's, it's not an issue for the town arborist, is that correct, Ally or Jake?
Yes, it's the, for tree 848, it is, I'm recommending six times for the basement, and they're wanting 5.5 times. And then for tree 8.
Requesting 5.5.
Yeah, 5.5. And then for tree 850, they're asking for 6.2 times, and I'm recommending eight times for the basement.
All right, I just, yeah, that for me, Claire, that can help focus our conversation a little bit. All right. Any other questions of staff? All right, then with that, I'll go ahead. Randy, is that you? Did you have a question?
No, I just said not for me.
Okay, good. All right, with that, then JP, you pulled on your presentation, and then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll start with the applicant or their representative, whomever that is.
I, yeah, I'm I'm happy to do that. Wonderful, so thank you for that. I'm Jess Field, by the way, I'm one of the architects. My father Stan Field over here on the top right of the screen, and our team over here as well. So thanks for giving me the opportunity, and thanks also for the concise summary. I think that that was really well-framed. So what I thought I'd do is, everything's in front of us here. I thought what I'd do is just kind of briefly share with you a very short deck of slides over here that just kind of puts some of these trees into visual context, so that we could get a bit of a frame of reference for how to make this decision, and then see if we can move this forward. And we're obviously hoping to see if we can move this along tonight, as we're hoping to keep our momentum on the project here. So if we're able to pull up my deck over there, that'd be great. Thank you, Jacob. Okay, terrific, and I'll just give you a cue to go to the next slide. Great, so let's go to the next one here. So this one, of course, is just a view looking west from the property, just so we can get a sense of the character of the land. And this is something that's been very important to us. This is where we start all of our work, you know, going back to Stan's first house in South Africa in 1972. It was kind of built around the trees in specific, and kind of launched our real interest in this. This is one of the beautiful oaks on the property, and one of many on the property that really kind of gives it its special character. Next, please. And I just thought I'd bring this little kind of contextual quote over here about the character of the land from the story of San Mateo Peninsula, really kind of calling out its identity as a grassland and oak woodland, which I know we all really know, and is something that has just been kind of a driving factor for us in terms of of really organizing our design strategy for the house in its context with the landscape and the trees. And we'll take the next one here. And one of the things that we, in just, you know, I'm showing you a picture of Stan, just so you can get a scale here of the trees, and this is kind of the line where the house is really gonna go. The house is really designed as a bridge between these trees and a windbreak as the property over here drops to the north in a very steep slope over here, and has a brief, flat, and narrow aperture over here along the backside before dropping steeply to the west, and these great views of skyline beyond. And from there, you can really kind of, you can see the redwoods on the skyline, ridge line, and then, of course, as it tapers back, you can very clearly from the the site see its character as a native oak woodland. And part of our challenge with the project was to really respond to a tree like this that's been here for 100, 200 years, in addition to the various trees that have been planted over time, as the lot had been developed through a sequence of the original build, and then the remodel later on. Next, please. So over here, just to kind of briefly see what the character of that site is, we, you know, we went back to 1948, really kind of clearly seeing these pockets of oak groves with the interspersed grasslands, and nothing really developed on the site yet. Yet you can see that big oak that I just pointed to right there on the west portion of the lot, probably would have been here if we had gone 100 years back further. Let's keep going. And this, of course, in 1965, we can see the initial development of the property, which brought a driveway up this side and the location of today's, of that. which brought a driveway up this side and the location of today's, of that oak is still, there's the big oak and there's this big grove of oaks over here. And then, of course, the rest of the tree, the rest of the, of the plant, of the, the lot was really a native grassland, no other trees of note. Next, please. And then, of course, going fast forwarding to twenty twenty, very happy to see that there are a lot more trees in the, in the area. And in fact, a lot of these have been reinforced as oaks, which I think has created a contiguous character over here and, and particularly around our property, this is fifty-five, this is the neighbor sixty-seven. There really is kind of a nice continuity of oaks that marries in with these two properties to the north and creates a bit of a feeling of kind of arriving at the property through this, this area of oak woodland. Next, please. This is just a, a quick geotech note over here. You can see the site plan that actually shows the borings that were taken by the property. And there's the driveway over here actually extends just where those redwoods would later be planted. Next. That's nineteen eighty, and this is nineteen eighty-five. You know, we actually have a landscape plan over here which really kind of calls out these redwoods as essentially as ornamental trees that are, that are planted at the, along the entryway. This is the entryway to the house over here and this is that area that projects out currently. And these red, redwoods are very close over here. I mean, had we done this today, I'm sure a landscape architect would have shown a, chosen a smaller tree, maybe a red bud or something like that that's native to, to this area and wouldn't be as tall. But these, of course, were planted as ornamentals, I think, which was done quite a bit back then and, and really have now become these, these, these large trees over the span, the quick span of thirty-five years since they were planted. And it's those that we're really kind of working, this discussion is really framed for us within a bigger discussion of what is the character of the site overall and how do we really treat these trees in the best possible way? So next one, please. Sorry, if you just go back one there, I just want to make one last point here because it does show the location of the existing non-compliant turnaround that I'll, I'll mention in the next slide. But this is, is very steep over here and this is very steep over here. And what happens over here is that there's a, there were a series of retaining walls that come in and carve the driveway in here in an effort to get up here. The radii are also not strictly compliant and this is, of course, the leftover area for the fire truck turnaround, which just by today's standards won't work. We went through a series of explorations with the fire department and the chief and together with our team, civil engineers, the contractors, and really found that the least invasive way to deal with this would really be to maintain the existing location of these retaining walls and not do a major reshaping of the, of the contours of the land over here, knowing how steep the slopes would be. We really couldn't even get up there feasibly without, you know, doing something completely different that would really restructure the whole character of this, of the site and it's, and really subjected to being kind of unusable by today's fire code. So what we elected to do is work with the same location, general location, which is really kind of the only flat portion that's accessible to a fire truck, but expand it out slightly further this way so they can get their fire truck turnaround leg kicking out to the west over there and then expand it slightly this way in, in, in the most minimal amount that they possibly allowed. And that unfortunately does require the removal of those two redwoods which are in that back corner. Next slide, please. So, you know, we're again, and, and thanks for tracking both these items because I'm, I'm kind of, I'll focus on the trees, on the TPZ, but I do want to just reference where those other removals are. So that's the fire truck turnaround. We did, as Jacob mentioned, look at a, at a several other options, but it's very kind of quickly noticeable that there's really no other good place to put the turnaround because for one, it just is too steep and secondly, it becomes inaccessible. And in addition to that, you know, we really, what we're doing here with the house, you can see is that we're just kind of creating an L shape that follow creates, creates this portion of the house as a buffer between the fire truck turnaround and the parking and the only place where you can really have a yard. The rest of it all in, in this orange color is all very steep slopes where we can't get that. And then this side over here turns to face the view, connects the beautiful, the redwoods over here with that beautiful oak and creates this little wind sheltered pocket where we can actually have a yard that has some semblance of usability similar to some, some of the other properties in the, in the area. And these, of course, are the, the redwoods over here in, in question. So I think with, with the, with the removal, regarding the removal of the two redwoods at the back over there, they're really, they're not visible from, from anywhere else when we go to the next slide there. And, and really they're at the... There we go, you can kind of see them here at the rear and, and in this, these two photos just give you a good sense of the, the depth of those retaining walls. You know, moving the fire truck turnaround this way is, is, is very, very limited. And I think we were really kind of inching it down as much as we could. And even with that, had, had to get the fire department to approve kind of a, an alternate to their standard compliance turnaround configuration. And these two trees over here, which we're proposing for removal, are, you know, they're two slightly smaller trees than the ones that we're looking at for the TPZ. They're not really up, up forming any kind of a, a major screening portion of the, of the property in any significant way. And really what we're, what we're planning on doing there is extending a grove of oaks that can become connected to the other grove of oaks that's already existing on the site and can have the, those beautiful Kirkus agrofolias, the coastline oaks that are the same and, and two Kirkus Lombardes Valley oaks that would be complementary to the oaks already on site. Next, please. And there you can just get a quick visual of that. So these two trees would have to be removed. And this is this big existing stand of, of oaks over here, the one on neighbors. And we'd basically be extending those with a series of new oaks over here that we're planning on, on including with the thirty-six inch boxes. Thank you for that. Okay, so just a quick visual now to transition to the TPZ and I'll focus there. Eric, as you, as you mentioned on eight forty-eight and eight fifty, just a quick diagram to show you where the new house is proposed relatively to the existing house. What we're seeing here is eight fifty and then over here, eight forty-eight, and then the other one is kind of tucked in behind there. So those are the two trees there, you know, this, you can see that they were planted probably as very small. In fact, they're specified as, as I think five or fifteen gallon cans in the original landscape drawings. So clearly those were very, very small trees when they were planted and they, you can see the proximity to the, to the retaining wall here of the driveway. And what you're seeing here is actually an equipment enclosure that's sitting outboard of the, of the house, which comes down over here and, and encroaches very closely into those, in, in the, into the, the location of those trees. And then there's that equipment pad that's also concrete outboard of that. So the, the, the house itself, which was built about five years prior to the introduction of that landscape, was there before the house, before the trees, it's, it's crawl space goes down, you know, from what we could tell, it's at least five feet. So that goes down somewhere over here. So our, our, in looking at this with the arbories, with the arborist, really the, the roots of that redwood would have had to deal with, with the limited space and really just kind of work themselves around here in order to adjust. But we really kind of felt like the, and the arborist felt like the, the likelihood of those, those roots kind of meandering around all of this and, and kind of necking up here in the, in that, in that, that delta between the, the five point five and the six X is, is so slim that, that we could, we could come before you with this, with exception, this exception request. So just to give a, a good sense of where our, our building is proposed here, just briefly, you can see the lower roof lines over here than the existing, which is a very tall building over here. And we're really kind of pulling the, the main line of the building back to here. And that's where the basement is and that's, and then, and then we do have this, this projecting bay window, which is actually, has a beautiful window which faces out to the redwoods in, in a, in a specific effort to kind of just make them visible and, and, and contain them within a landscape of reestablished native oaks. So that whole perimeter of oak trees, we want to reestablish that as wrapping, enveloping the whole perimeter of the property. But since these, even though we feel like these particularly redwoods were introduced as ornamentals and are not necessarily native to this area, we still felt like they are mature trees and we, we find them to be beautiful. They've got a very tall branching canopy over here that, that would allow us to kind of build in, in proximity to it and, and really kind of echo what the original house was doing and establish that same relationship with them and keep them on site since they are, they are a, a resource over here. Next, please. Just to give you a quick visual and I, I apologize for the, the wide angle over here. It's a little hard to capture it without falling down the slope. But you can see over here, this is a very, very close proximity, which we're planning on increasing. We're going to pull that back from where it is and the crawl space underneath here is, is in, in, in very close proximity to these roots. You can see this, that this tree over here and this tree over here. And then you can see that equipment pad with the concrete enclosure over here and a few air handling units above it. Next, please. Just a quick view from inside, you can just giving you a sense of, of the, the depth and the height of the, of the building over there. And then this is actually the corner that goes out in that, in that kind of prow shaped angle over there. And they, they actually built in a little bar underneath here that is actually depressed. So it goes down even further ostensibly within that five foot crawl space potential, or, or maybe even a little bit deeper. It's a little hard to know. And that's really what's cutting into that root space. Thank you. So in looking at the, at the various options, together with the, the town arborist, we reviewed three options initially with, with Sally. The first one was to proceed with the initial design and really kind of do an exploratory trench. We, we did the exploratory trench. We found minimal roots impacted there. They were all small. They were, of course, carefully protected and so forth and it's since been covered up. And I think you saw the, the photographs there in the report. In addition to that, we are proposing not to do the OSHA cut. And instead of that, Lencioni, who's done quite a bit of work in the area with, with trees of this nature, recommended the blindside waterproofing, which is a way where essentially lagging is put up against, directly up against there so that that, that cut into the, into the earth can be made vertically without having to lean it back with the OSHA standards. And then basically that wood lagging becomes the, the backdrop for waterproofing, which is then poured directly against it. So everything is, is right on the line of the building so that it doesn't have an additional impact into the, the, the zone of where that, that tree might, might have roots. And so the third option was to actually consider saying, you know, taking the stance of, look, this is, this is a native oak woodland. Those are the, you know, the, the native insect species there of which there, you know, seventeen of, seventeen different species of ant and whatnot that live in a Kirkus agrofolia, this is what should really be on the site. And why don't we just apply for the removal of these redwoods and, and really confirm this site as a native oak woodland? With that in mind, we did feel that given the, the, you know, the stature of the trees, they would be worth preserving despite the fact that they're not native to the region and they're, they're beautiful. And even though they're only thirty-five years old, we could integrate them successfully into the design and be no closer really than the, the existing building, which was planted prior to the, which was built prior to their planting, was established. And so we ended up with option two, which was doing the blindside waterproofing, but actually retracting the, the building footprint in order to give them more space beyond where the existing building was. So let's take a look in the next slide at where that is. And this is, this is kind of to put the, the diagrams that Jake, the plans that Jacob shared with you just into a visual reference over here. This is tree eight fifty and you can see the, the, this is the, the face of the tree over here. This is that equipment pad that I mentioned. And here is, I brought this in blue, so you can just see this contrasting. Here's the rough drip line of the, of the tree kind of coming down to the ground over here. And then here in, I'll, I'll, I'll trace it in blue is the eight X TPZ. So that is the, the area of eight X that would give us the, the, the staff's recommendation and, and, and the town arborist's eight X recommendation. That encroachment into the TPZ that we're requesting over there, that goes below there into that six point two X is really confined to this area shown here in pink, which is really just a, basically a, a corner that's tucked all the way at the back of this equipment enclosure that's already behind the existing house that has that five foot crawl space below here and this underneath here is where that bar was that you saw in the, in the interior view. So in looking at this with our arborist, you know, there, that just the, the likelihood of any root impact at that location was so minimal that we, that we felt that this was, was something to bring before you, given that, that, that going to the strict requirements of the eight X over there would, would have some significant impacts onto that very constrained location option that we had for the, for the house and the, the way that impacts the yard. So this gives you a bit of a, a visual on, on that.
What's the square footage of the, of the pink area?
The square footage of the pink area over there. Juliette, could you help me on that one? I believe it's thirty-two square feet.
This should be in the next few slides, but I'll pull it up.
Sure, yeah, let's, let's keep going and let's, I'll, I'll just make sure to answer that question there. Go. So, so yeah, that, that, that is-
One, one sixty-two.
So that area, that area in pink over here, which I, which I was showing on that slide, you know, of course, what, what the other item on here is that equipment enclosure, which is here. So that area that we were indicating on the photo, which is what I had access there to photograph, was this, this sliver over here. And that is-
So that's half of that.
Yeah, it would be, I, I think that's the sixty-two square feet.
Okay.
Okay. And some of that, just to add to that, some of that sixty-two square feet, that sixty-two square feet actually measures this full rectangle here, which is, which is, some of that is, is actually already underneath the equipment pad. So that equipment pad, you know, maybe it's, looks like it's about half of that. So maybe in aggregate, it's maybe thirty-five square feet or something like that.
Right. Okay, good.
Okay, next, next one, please.
What's the other, what's the other pink area? What is that?
Sorry, so the other pink area, that's on tree eight forty-eight, which is this one over here. So eight forty-eight over here, this shows the difference between the five point five and the six X and the five point five, so that the, this, you know, the five point five is to this line and the six X would take us to this line.
What's the square footage there?
The square footage there is, Juliette-
Yep.
Background, but I would guess that that's maybe twenty, twenty-five square feet.
Okay.
Very perimeter there, yeah. And, and just to make quick note of this, that, that the line of the existing building is here. So all, the entirety of that difference between the six X and the five point five X is actually underneath the, the crawl space of that existing building. So there's no new encroachment there really. And on the other one, of course, the, the only new encroachment is really just this, this area over here.
Where's the basement line on this?
The basement line is, is here.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Yeah, absolutely. And that, and that would be where that blindside waterproofing would, would be. So they would basically, they, they wouldn't have to have that OSHA cut, they would have, they would come to there. Rather, they would be able to, we'd be able to just drive that lagging down right there and then waterproof directly against it.
Where's the overhang?
The overhang on the next slide is over here. So this is a cantilevered structure. It's essentially a bay window. And this, this essentially kind of protrudes into the space of where that existing building was while still cutting back this corner over here that was jutting out so kind of sharply into that space of the trees and is essentially their, their breakfast nook. And you can see here the window that's actually specifically meant to, to make visible the, the, the kind of the feeling of the forest and that, you know, just that beautiful sense of being in the, in this kind of vertical bark of the redwoods over there. And, and the, the, you can see here that the, the only corner that protrudes beyond where the line of the existing building is, is this small sliver over here, which is five square feet. And that's above ground with no root impact under trees that have been living together with an existing structure since their, their planting. And the, the tree canopy has been maintained high over the years. And I think the lowest branch was, you know, was somewhere in the fifteen to twenty feet range.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob.
All right.
So I think that that pretty much summarizes it. Hopefully you've, that could give you kind of a bit of context for this discussion. So you really appreciate you hearing us out on this and hopefully we can find the best way forward here together.
All right. Thank you. Good, good, good overview. Very, very, very precise on the issues that we need to be talking about. And I know Juliette had a lot to do with that. So thank you, Juliette, too. Any, any questions on that from the commissioners?
None for me.
No.
You answered all my questions along the way, so I really appreciate it. With that, then I'll open up the public hearing for anyone else who'd like to speak on this stuff. Anyone here to speak on this item? Everybody's got their mute on. All right, there's a chat, there's a chat comment down here. Let me look and see who that is. So someone says they didn't see the alternative on the website before the meeting. Is that Jake? And Jake, is it is the same thing on the website on our?
Yes, on the agenda, which has been posted to the town website under item four A, there is a staff report with six attachments. The alternative draft certificate is attachment six and includes recommendation or conditions of approval for the project as proposed.
All right, good. So it is posted.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, then Nancy, any questions?
No, it's very clear. Thank you.
All right, good. No, and I don't see anybody looking to to speak on this item. So I'll, I'll bring it, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So I, is Randy and Nancy, is there if I start on this one?
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
I'm feeling like, you know, this is, this is a good example where the, where the numbers don't really tell the story. But the story laid out tells me we're not dealing with a very big percentage here. We're actually getting an improvement out of this.
Right.
Although it's a grand architecture that exists there today, but it doesn't look like it has a lot of usable space relative to the space it takes. But it seems to me that this one is a good example of how the, you know, the twenty five square foot actually, you know, although it's twenty five square feet, it improves what's there now. The sixty two square feet improves what's there now. And there's a lot of thought put in. I, you know, if I were out working the site, I probably would have asked for rate forty eight to be removed just because, you know, I just watched a redwood tree grow too close to the foundation of a home in my neighborhood. And when they put it in, I said, ah, man, that's not going to last too long. And eighteen years later, it didn't. So I'm glad that there's been some thought put into this, both from the standpoint of the, you know, whether to keep the tree or not and why. It's made a lot of sense to me. And this, this exception makes sense to me. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the request, given the amount of effort that's gone into making sure the trees are protected. And in fact, their, their, their impact is so relatively small and so much of an improvement over what's there now. And also since they're redwoods, they have a tendency, Sally's taught me before, have a tendency to be able to handle, you know, where they've been really well. They're really, they're really good at adjusting to where they've been. So you give them more space, they're probably going to go, ah, they'll be, they'll be sighing, a sigh of relief. So Sally, I, is this, is this really a big problem? The proposal that's the sixty two square feet, the six point two versus the eight? As a percent of the whole circle, it seemed like a small impact. So you've got to talk to me about that a little bit.
Yeah. So I mean, at some point I have to, I can't just be going at five times, four times, because there is a standard. So I have to follow that standard. And so I felt like anything under six times is not something I can approve. Because the reason why we have the new code is because people were building too close to structures and causing trees to decline. So I'm trying to stay away from approving things less than six times for that reason. Because even the construction impacts will not be good for the trees. So.
Do you, do you, so what's the, what's the multiple on the tree right now with the current site? It's like two point eight?
I'm not actually sure.
Well, it's got to be in the three range, right?
Given that. Again, that would have never been approved and that should have, I mean, if, if I understand that the trees were planted when the house was built, but that would be something that would, even with our old code, would have never been approved. So in my eyes, yes, they're moving it back further, but that doesn't mean, I mean, the way it was done before was too close.
Yeah, but that, that what was wrong, what was the mistake then was planting the tree. It wasn't the house, right?
Right.
You would never plant a tree that close to that retaining wall like that.
Well, people still do that today. So.
But, you know, but a rocket scientist wouldn't. So, you know, it's, it's, we would never, we would never say plant a tree next to that retaining wall. That tree, tree number eight fifty to be alive that close to retaining wall surprises me. So it just shows you how determined to live redwoods are. All right.
I mean, they were making a lot of points about the native oak trees. So wherever in the town, there's no preference over natives or non-natives. The town just wants to protect trees that are fifteen inches in diameter or greater.
Right.
So in my eyes, I'm following the town code. So I don't, I don't have preference for native oaks or non-native oaks.
Yeah, I agree. That, to me, wasn't, wasn't the point. So one aspect of the code that that we may want to be thinking about then is the percent of that, of that six by that is, that is used in the overall. So if somebody comes in and says, I want to do five point five, and it covers forty eight percent of that five point five area, that's clearly a situation where, you know, we want to stay away from that for the health of the tree. When it's, when it's this small, it seems, I mean, we're talking about ninety percent, ninety eight percent of the request for for six oh, ninety eight percent of this falls into six, six times category. Is that correct? The difference between five point five and six is twenty five square feet, which means something around ninety eight percent of the circle of six by is, is clear for this tree. Is that correct? I'm asking Sally.
Um, yes.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's the issue for me on this one is that, is that the, the, we're still dealing with a, a overwhelming percentage of six by on this tree. And, and so that's what makes me more comfortable than someone who would come in and say, I want a five point five. And it was taking, you know, over, you know, some, some whatever percentage that is above two percent. But the two percent seems like it, you know, to the difference, the difference of calling the, calling the perimeter five point five when two percent of it is five point five, seems like it overstates the diameter and it overstates the impact. So in the future, we got to figure out how to, how to, how to think about that, because I think that, for me, it's a factor on this one. On the eight fifty to six point two, what, you have any idea what the, what the perimeter is on right now? Sally?
Yeah, I'm, no, I don't have that information.
Okay, but it's close.
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, I mean, I'm not going to speak on that because there's another applicant later in the evening that really spelled out the distances currently existing conditions. But for this one, it wasn't exactly clear.
Okay.
The applicant can speak on it.
Okay. All right, good. All right, any, any, that's all I have. Thank you, Sally. And thank you. Thank you, Jake. All right. Time for somebody to wake up.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm, this is Randy. I'm absolutely fine with, with what's been proposed.
Oh, which, which proposal? You mean by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Nancy? You're on mute.
Okay, I undid it.
Good. Any, 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 any comments or questions?
No, I, I'm interested to listen to this and I don't have any questions from it.
All right, good. Then with that, we're open for a motion on, let's start with the removal request, I, motion A. The, the, the removal looks like a straightforward one to me, both from a safety standpoint and from no, zero impact standpoint to the community and because the staff is, is fine with it. So I need a motion on that.
I'm happy to make a move that the planning commission find the request for a heritage tree removal for two coast redwoods trees, eight sixteen and eight seventeen, to not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report and the planning commission approved the heritage tree removal HTR permit at fifty five Melanie Lane, subject to the conditions as set. I'm sorry, as listed in the draft HTR TPZ exception certificate.
All right, great. Nancy, you're second in that one, or am I?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Right, moving seconded. Stephanie, are you doing the roll call?
Yes. Karen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
All right, great. Then the second part would be the, the TPZ. Like I said, I'm comfortable with the alternative motion on this one. I think it'll actually improve the site and I don't think it'll be an impact to the tree. And, and Sally, just to clarify, we're going to have somebody verify that the trees protected when the, when the trench is dug, right? You want to, you want to take your mute off? Sally, you got your.
Their private arborists will have to be on site when they're doing the digging.
Great, great. And please don't make sure they don't use a backhoe, please. This is a no backhoe one, right, Sally?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, very, very often, just for, just, just so you know, very often, we, we have a situation where it says no backhoe, but somebody shows up for a backhoe for something else, like did you get out of pool? And they say, oh, we got to dig this too. And pretty soon, if you're a neighbor, you start looking, wait a minute, why are they using a backhoe by that tree? So just be very, very alert to the fact that once a backhoe shows up on the property, it gets leveraged. And it would not be appropriate on this, in this case. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but I'm, I'm.
Go ahead. No, 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 go ahead. That's great.
Nancy, are you okay if I make a motion?
Sure, go ahead, Eric.
Okay, good. I moved that the planning commission find the exception to the tree protection zone for the three heritage trees, tree eight forty seven to seven times the tree diameter, tree eight forty eight to five point five times the tree's diameter for the basement and three, three point two times the tree's diameter for the cantilever structure and the trees eight fifty and a tree eight fifty to six point two times the tree's diameter for the basement and above ground structure would be not, not contrary to the purpose and intent of the government and for the reasons outlined in the staff report. And the commission approved the TPZ exception at fifty five Melanie Lane, subject to the condition as listed in the alternative draft HTR TPZ exceptions are to be again.
I'll second.
Moving seconded.
I'll second.
Any, any, any comments? Any comments? All right, then we're ready for a roll call.
Caroline?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Naronsek is absent.
All right. That's, that's, that's it. Thank you for coming. Just thank you for putting together, Justin and Stan and Juliette. Thank you for putting together a thorough presentation. And it also makes me think about some ideas of what we need to tune our organs, maybe. Thank you very much and good luck with the, with the, with the project, by the way, when I was at the base of the, I drove my MGA over to your site to tour the site and I parked, I know, across your driveway and a guy with a tractor came down with filled with rocks and, and I hadn't moved. I don't know if he would see me. So he said, who is that masked man on the MGA? That was me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're in costume again, huh?
It was.
There you go.
Yeah, there's a, there's a history for those who haven't watched me over the years. A four B, the tree protection zone exception at one thirty three Burns Avenue in Atherton. And who's the lucky presenter on this one? Well, to go through the same process on this, we'll start with the, with the staff, followed by the applicant or the representative and then by anyone who wants to talk. Stephanie, are you the goer in this one?
That'll be me. Thank you.
All right, good.
All right, good evening, commissioner. So tonight, the commission is being asked to consider a tree protection zone exception for three heritage tree, redwood heritage, redwood trees at one thirty three Burns. The requested tree protection zone exception or TPC exception is slightly less than eight times for each of the three trees. Just a little bit of background, at your meeting last month, the commission did review and approve a tree protection zone exception at this property for three different heritage trees to accommodate a proposed main residence addition. The commission also denied a heritage tree removal at this site for one heritage tree that is now slated to remain. So the request for the TPZ exception tonight again is for three heritage redwood trees that are located in the left rear of the yard to accommodate a proposed swimming pool addition. All three trees are noted to be both by the project arborist and concurred by the town arborist, good to fair health. They are noted as a species which can accommodate a higher construction tolerance as well as proposing to encroach into the otherwise required tree protection zone by less than five percent. So the town arborist has reviewed the project arborist report, visited the site and evaluated the request in the context of the Mathenian Clark tolerance, tolerance chart, which is an industry standard document that arborists do use in evaluating potential impacts to heritage trees related to construction types and distances from. And make a determination that the specifics of this request does meet the criteria of the town's heritage tree guidelines and standards document, thus with the conditions as recommended in the draft TPZ exception certificate, is recommending approval of the application. With that, happy to answer any questions that the commissioner may, commission may have. I do see that the project arborist is on the call as well as the project architect.
All right, good. All right, any questions to staff?
None for me.
None here. Nancy, you're all clear?
Yep.
Okay, good. Then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and we'll hear from the applicant or the representative first. Who would that be?
Hi there, everyone. My name is Laura May Sarusi. I'm with Pacific Commensal Architecture. You might, I might look familiar from last month because we were here before. Basically, this was just an issue of there was a noticing error to the neighbors. So we anticipated including these three trees with the initial review that you guys did last month. But just because of the noticing error, we had to take them off. So we're bringing them in. We weren't trying to, you know, we were trying to do it all, all together previously. But obviously, I, I think Sally supports this. We're, we're trying to keep the lap lane extension as far from the, you know, redwood grove as we can, but obviously we're extending an existing pool. So it's kind of like the best spot for it. And then, you know, it's a single lane and we're trying to keep the hardscape around it minimal. And then also removing an existing hot tub and hardscape under the trees. I don't know, Stephanie, if you shared the visual. I don't think anybody's, I don't know if they can see the site plan or if you guys have it in front of you. But anyway, it's, it is, oh, there you go.
There comes the magic of Jake.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Jake. So, so yeah, you know, the trees that we're approaching on are, it's, it's very minimal percentage. I can't actually read it. If you could zoom in a little bit. I think I actually give the square footage of encroachment on ten times. Thank you so much. Just I'll have to pull it up myself. But, you know, obviously the blue areas are showing encroachment on the ten times TPZ. But we're really, we're encroaching just under eight times on each of the trees. So it's sort of, if that's what's requiring planning commission approval. if that's what's requiring planning commission approval, I think otherwise Sally would have probably approved it administratively if it wasn't under eight times. So anyway, just wanted to mention all that and thank you for your consideration. That's it.
All right, that's good. And just, yeah, that's good. All right. Any questions? All right, uh, is there anyone else here? Oh, hold on. Was there anyone else here to speak on this item? Then I'll go ahead and now officially close it. Randy, you didn't have anything else? Do you have anything on this?
Nope, nope. I'm good.
All right.
I'm hap- I'm happy to make a motion when we're ready.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead. Hang on a second.
I've got it right here if you, if you don't have it in front of you.
No, no, I, I, hang on a second. Yeah, go ahead if you're going to do it. I'm just flipping through this. This was, may have been the largest package of all time. I just feel bad about all the trees. All the trees that got knocked down just to make this damn package.
Yeah, I, I, I went ahead and separated it by group and then restapled by, by items. So I could find stuff. I'm going to find the exception of the tree protections on TPZ for the three heritage redwood trees, tree seven to seven point five six, uh, the tree's diameter and tree eight to seven point five two, the tree diameter and tree ten to seven point two six times uh, the tree diameter for the property at one thirty-three Burns Avenue. It would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan and for these reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approved the TPZ exception on one thirty-three Burns Avenue, subject to the condition as listed in the draft TPZ exception, exception certificate.
I'll second.
Moving seconded. And any comments?
Nope.
Roll call, Stephanie?
Carol Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yep.
Commissioner Naransik is absent.
All right, thank you for waiting and, and good luck with the project and I hope that we see you back with some new ideas on the, on the garage. I like the property a lot. All right, uh, item, item four C, tree protection zone protection at seventy Amador Avenue in Atherton. Let's go. Let's go with the same process. So, uh, for those who, it looks like a couple people might come on a little after we did the first, uh, item. What we're doing here is we always start the items with the staff going over the, uh, the item and give us an overview and then we open up the public comment for any, uh, for the applicant to speak first and then for anyone who'd like to speak on the item. And then we bring it back to the commission for discussion and actions appropriate. So with that, we'll start. Stephanie, you want to go for this one too?
Yes, thank you. Um, well, I give, thank you Jake, you read my mind. If you could pull up the site plan, please. So tonight, the commission is being again requested, uh, to consider a tree protection zone exception. This request is associated with one heritage redwood tree that's located in the front center of the lot just outside the main buildable area at seventy Amador. So while the tree itself is located outside the main buildable area, I, given its size of a sixty-two inch diameter, it's required TPZ or tree protection zone actually does encroach within the buildable area. The applicant does have future plans to construct a new main residence with a basement as well as some other accessory buildings and structures. Uh, there, it's noted that there are fourteen existing heritage trees on site. Uh, the proposed future plans propose to maintain all of those fourteen trees, less two that are determined to be dead and can be approved, uh, for removal at the staff level. So the specifics of the TPC request are down to a TPZ of six times for various areas of proposed improvements, specifically for crawl space that's associated with an attached ADU attached to the main residence, I would like to specify. Uh, for a main residence basement and associated light well for the excavation and scouring work that would be required to construct the main residence basement as well as for some at-grade uncovered parking areas. So the applicant has worked extensively with town staff, uh, and the, uh, arborist, uh, both on project revisions and adequate, um, our project arborist evaluations to reduce any potential impacts that otherwise were preliminarily identified as potential impacts to, uh, the tree's tree protection zone. So a project arborist report, as is required with all TPC applications, as well as a supplemental arborist memorandum have been prepared. That supplemental memorandum did evaluate uh, results of an additional exploratory trench that was dug to determine the presence, uh, in depth of any roots of the heritage tree. So these reports together, um, do conclude then note the higher tolerance of, uh, a redwood tree for construction. Uh, that this particular tree is, has good vigor and form. And that no roots were encountered during that supplemental exploratory trenching dig. So again, um, the town arborist has reviewed the project arborist reports uh, and visited the site, uh, and evaluated all in the context of the town's tree protection zone guidelines and specifications, municipal codes, as well as that, again, industry standard document of the Mathenian Clark tolerance chart. And determine that the specifics of the request, as they are proposed, do meet the criteria of the town's guidelines, uh, and combined with the recommended conditions of approval in the draft, um, tree protection zone approval certificate is recommending, uh, that the planning commission consider approval of the application. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. I, I do see the, um, project architect is, is on the call.
I have, this is Randy, I have none.
I don't have any either. Nancy, you have any?
No, I don't see anything that's a problem here really.
All right, let's hear from the applicant or the project arborist, whoever. Go ahead and open up the public hearing if I, dandy, dandy, yeah, we'll hear and we'll start.
Person, huh? Yes, good evening commissioners and thank you Stephanie for your concise, uh, summary of, of our request tonight. Um, as you mentioned, the, the redwood tree in front of the property is, is such a large diameter that it actually takes up about thirty percent of the buildable area if we're following the ten times diameter. While looking at the existing development, um, the existing garage and hardscape come up to within two X to three X times the diameter of the tree. Um, so we worked with, with Sally and Stephanie to provide a solution that, uh, meets the recommendations, including, uh, setting the building back a little bit further than we originally proposed and adjusting the, uh, foundation type under the attached ADU to limit the, um, limit the effects on the root structure. Uh, so we also completed an exploratory trench through the center of the garage at the six times limit and showed no signs of, of any roots of, um, substantial size there. Uh, so all in all, we're really taking a existing development which had thirty-three percent encroachment past the six times and reducing it to zero percent into the six times zone there. Uh, thank you for your time. And let me know if there's any other questions I can answer.
Any questions?
Not for me. Other than, is that the same background that the Warriors use and you guys just flip it around whether it's a warrior game or a PPG or what's going on with that?
Absolutely. You gotta be professional here, right?
That's right. Mission, mission accomplished. Thank you.
All right, uh, is anyone else here to speak on this item? I'm seeing a lot of mutes on, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. I don't have anything on this one. It seems-
I, I absolutely, I'm absolutely fine with it.
Nancy, you okay? All right, need a motion?
Yeah, I have it. I have it, just no glasses. Hang on. So I moved that the planning commission find the exception to the TPZ tree protection zone for one heritage redwood tree, tree eleven, number eleven to six, act, six times to the, the tree's diameter for the property at seventy Amador Avenue would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approved the TPZ exception at seventy Amador Avenue, subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception certificate.
Second. Nancy, you second on that one?
I'll second it. Nancy?
All right. So for roll calls, Stephanie?
Carol Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Naransik is absent.
All right, all right Sean, good job. Go, go, go bill them. All right.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Talk to you soon. All right. Sally, thanks for all your work on all these. You're like, you're like May giving us work. You just stand around for the rest or she's got, I figured she was-
Uh, I'm gonna head out because the rest are just, uh, vaporizer.
Yeah, I figured that. All right, again. All right, have a good evening. What's left of it. All right, with that then we'll go to, uh, to, uh, item number, uh, four D with the school master plan for Sacred Heart. So we'll start the same process, uh, with an, with an overview from Stephanie, I guess, right?
Yes, I'll, I'll have the rest of the items for the rest.
All right, good.
Thank you Chair. And so this is a request for a planning commission, uh, to consider accepting Sacred Heart Schools' master plan update for, um, twenty twenty-one. So as is done annually, Sacred Heart School has prepared an update to their existing master plan to discuss any changes to different components of their schools, specifically related to land use, parking, circulation, business operations and other criteria. So the, the largest update to the, uh, two thousand twenty-one master plan relative to last year's, uh, master plan uh, is the identification for the construction of one new four thousand square foot, one-story kindergarten building. This item will actually be discussed, um, in greater detail later in tonight's agenda as its construction triggers the need for the planning commission to consider a conditional use permit. Uh, in terms of updates of what has happened this year, since the commission saw the master plan last year, uh, the school's new aquatic building has completed its construction. Um, the master plan update itself does also speak to the school's COVID nineteen response. Um, incl- and this response does include, um, some detail on the school's various PPE, um, approaches. Speaks to its use of temporary outdoor classrooms and bathrooms as well as speaking to its partial in-person instruction that has occurred throughout this, um, occurred and is occurring throughout this, um, existing school calendar year. So, um, similar to last year, due to the continued COVID nineteen pandemic um, and since the school did not operate at its normal full capacity, no formal transportation demand management plan or TDM monitoring plan was conducted as is otherwise been required, um, prior to any COVID times. Um, and so this was due to significantly limited traffic flow due to the much limited capacity at the school. But even as such, uh, staff would note that no comments or concerns or issues have been expressed to staff in the course of the last calendar year as it relates to traffic or circulation from any neighboring properties, um, at the school. Um, with that, um, staff does find and is detailed in the staff report that the contents of the two thousand twenty-one master plan update do adequately meet the direction as specified in the town's municipal code and recommend that the planning commission do accept the two thousand and twenty-one, um, annual update uh, and report from Sacred Heart Schools on their master plan. Thank you Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
None for me. All right, nobody's, Nancy, looks like she-
Not for me either.
Okay, good. So I'll go ahead and open the public, uh, comment section and we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. I have a point of order question. There are only three commissioners on and if one has to recuse themselves, how do we proceed?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask that question too. Since, since we, uh, started, well, you know, we can't really get a, a quorum, but, oh God, can we?
No.
Yeah, we, we can, we can tier it or, or reschedule it. I'm sorry about that because we expected to have four tonight. But you're right Randy, you couldn't do this one, right?
Well, yeah, so that's, that's where I was just going to go with it is, I can't, I, I think the way staff that, that people have done this in the past is that I can listen to the master plan updates but not vote on them. Um, but for something like item five, I can't, I have to recuse completely. I can't, can't even sit in it or vote on it. So I, unless we reach out to Perry or somebody that, that might, it sounds like Paul's gone, but unless we could have, get Perry on, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, you're right, Michael. That's a good, that's a good point. I was actually gonna, I didn't want you to, since, which, what the other commissioners don't know is that you were trying to get on last time and I didn't want to take it off, uh, and it was such a big agenda last time. And the, since the commission had been in a, uh, several hour meeting prior to that with the city council, I figured that we would just be as it was, we were in a five and a half hour. So I, I didn't want to take you off the agenda, uh, at, earlier on when I only saw three, but I kept on hoping Perry, which would show because I thought we would get to this point. Uh, from a time perspective, it does not a good use of your time because I, I think, you know, Perry and, uh, um, and, and Paul would want to hear it. And we're, and we're likely to have a close, uh, number next time if Paul does, if Paul either, uh, if no one applies and Paul, I think is going to apply if it's a shorter term. But, uh, uh, it'll be a close next time too.
So my, my concern is that we don't have time and I need to know what alternatives are. We have to open the kindergarten building in August. And so we are really, really pressed for time. And I get it, it's not your issue. The issue came to us from the state.
Yeah.
Once we knew, we acted. So.
So the, and the, so the, the August timeline is relative to, the building can't be done by then, can it?
It can. It's a prefabricated. It, it's actually, the panels are mostly built already. They just get slapped up on site.
Well, uh, we-
Prefabricated.
Yeah, we, we can, uh, we can, we can have a special meeting.
Can we reach out?
Yeah, we've been doing-
Can we reach out to Perry? Can we, someone reach out to Perry and go, we just need you on for two items? I mean, I don't want to be the one suggesting that, although I just did, but I just think it, it, I mean, especially given the, the fact that we all expected him on. I think that's a fair thing, at least from Mike's standpoint, or could we do a special meeting? And the problem on those, don't you have to notice them? Don't we have to do a whole noticing process?
We can do that, but we've been trying to get a whole Perry behind the scenes, right, Stephanie?
For the Chair, um, I have, I, during the course of this conversation, I did, actually earlier in the meeting, reach out to Perry, um, and he just did respond that he's going to attempt to join the meeting momentarily, so.
Okay, good.
Good.
Perhaps in the interest of-
Okay, there you go.
Perhaps in the interest of time, Chair, if you want to hold calling this item to order, revise the agenda order and perhaps we could take item, um, five um, while we allot some time for, um, Commissioner Naransik to join.
Yeah, Michael, that's okay, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. So let's go-
No, isn't, isn't five the one you care about though, Mike, in terms of anything that helps to take action?
Four E. So-
Oh, four E, sorry.
Yeah, four D and four E is, is their item and five is the general plan.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
It's the fifth one in the, in the, in the, in the four category, but this is, we're going to go to five. So with, with that, I need a motion to, uh, to move, to move to item five and we'll come back to four D when the other member comes. So I'll move that we, we adjust the agenda to, to work on item five right now. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, roll call, Stephanie?
Carol Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Okay, good. So let's go to item five and we'll come back to four, where Perry gets here. So thank you for your flexibility. Thank you for bringing it up, Michael. I was, I didn't want to cut you off early, but I appreciate the fact that you're paying to wait for the other commissioner. All right, then with that, we'll go with, uh, this one, uh- All right, then with that, we'll go with this one. Stephanie is both the presenter and the applicant. Go ahead.
All right.
Oh, by the way, item five is general plan consistency, determination of the capital improvement programs consistent with the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, you wanna give us the overview?
Thank you, Chair. So annually, the planning commission is asked to review the town's current fiscal year draft capital improvement plan or CIP and make a recommendation to the city council for its consistency with the general plan. So the CIP is a five-year planning document which identifies potential projects and their funding sources. The projects that are identified in a CIP are in the areas of streets and transportation, drainage improvements, and town buildings, facilities, and parks. The specific projects identified in the CIP, for example, the traffic safety improvement program and park accessibility improvements are derived from either identified council direction and priorities from the community, from staff, or from other adopted town plans such as the bicycle and pedestrian master plan or the Holbrook Park master plan. The CIP presented to the commission tonight and as attached in complete detail within the staff report was to review this plan by the city council at its May meeting in draft form. It's scheduled to take formal action by the town council at their June meeting. So as such, at that meeting, the council may choose to fund or not fund certain projects that are identified in the CIP. So again, as detailed in the staff report, the identified projects in the areas of streets and transportation, drainage improvements, town facilities, parks, and buildings are found to be consistent with the various appropriately designated general plan elements to assure its consistency. And as such, staff is recommending that the planning commission find the CIP for fiscal year 21, 22, planned out to 2024, 25, consistent with the town's general plan and recommend such to the city council.
Any questions?
Nope.
It's actually getting clearer every year I've been on the commission, so you're doing a good job on that. All right, we need, let me ask, is there anyone here to speak on this item? So I don't see anybody, so I'm gonna open and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. I'm, I'm okay, so on this one. So Nancy, you wanna do the, if you've got any questions, Nancy, or can you do the motion on this one?
No, I don't really. This is becoming routine. You're right, Eric. You want me to do the formal motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I move that the planning commission accept for filing the night, the 2021 annual master plan update and TDM monitoring report from Sacred Heart Schools.
No, no, no.
What'd you say? No, you, you had the wrong one.
We skipped, we skipped with Nancy, we skipped over to number five, which is on, I, I don't even have the page on this one.
Wrong one.
Page.
I just read.
Page five of, no, page five of the next one. We skipped the sacred heart stuff just to be able to go through it with, with, if Perry jumps on.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, that lost me, I guess. What, number five?
Yeah. I've got it right here. All right, I'll, I'll do the motion then. I'll, I'll move the planning commission find the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021, 22 through 25, 26, and the projects included in the program are consistent with the Atherton general plan for reasons noted in the staff report. Make the motion, I have a second. Randy, you have a second of that?
Yep, a second.
All right, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tannely is excused. Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
And I see that Commissioner Narnsick has joined the meeting by phone. However, I don't believe he joined prior to the discussion, so would not be able to cast vote on this.
Yes, I don't see him on the, he fell off, I think. I, I saw him, I saw him at 2,800 line. I was there, but then it went away. So hopefully he's gonna come back in. Let's go to, let's go to item number six, staff reports. Michael, just sit tight. We're gonna finish out the rest of the agenda except for item eight and come back to you. I don't need a motion for that, do I, Stephanie? We can go ahead with the sixes and sevens.
Yes.
All right, staff report, anything? Item number six, staff report.
Thank you. And one order of business, the planning department has hired a new assistant planner, Ralph Robinson. He is here on the meeting. Just would like to virtually introduce him to the commission and to the members of the public that are here. Ralph, wanted to introduce yourself, maybe say a few words in your planning background, that'd be great.
Yes, hello, everyone. Good to join you tonight. I have some familiarity. I got to watch the April 28th meeting recently. So I feel like I know you guys a little bit already, but as we start to get back in person, it'll be nice to get to see you in person and get to get, know you all a little more. Yes, as far as my background, I actually just graduated last night from San Jose State's Master Urban Planning Program, which is also where Jake came from. So we've got some good, good background with SJSU here. And yeah, this is my first full-time planning gig, but Stephanie and Jake are getting me up to speed here great to learn so far. And like I said, I'm really enjoying getting to learn more about you guys in Atherton and I'm actually right next door to Fair Oaks. So yeah, excited about this opportunity.
Oh, good. I'm, I'm over in Fair Oaks too. I'm on the last street in Atherton. I'm right on Encina, so you probably see me walking around the neighborhood.
Oh, great. Yeah, I'm on Seventh Ave, so I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, two blocks away. All right, good. All right, well, the, the, next, next, two, next Tuesday, Stephanie, is the acronym test that he has to take. Is that correct?
I was thinking we do a pop quiz right now.
Good, a pop quiz. That's a good idea. Right, all right. What does TPC?
Might be a hard one to miss.
Jake, you know, you're, you're, you're holding out for more money. Is that what it is? I hear you're going to the big leagues. You're gonna, you're gonna do things like homeless shelters and dump sites and high-density housing. Is that where you're headed?
Yeah, I, I won't be too far away from Atherton, but I will be transitioning out here. So it's really been a pleasure working with you all and hopefully I'll get at least one more meeting with you.
All right, good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Go ahead, Randy.
No, that's it. I said, congrats.
Yeah, yeah, for those who don't know, we use a management firm to, to, for our staff and although some are here, certainly like Stephanie, others can come in, rotate out and, and get experience in multiple different communities. That's how they get developed as, as planners. I, and I went through three different planning commissions and still don't get it right. So you'll have fun. Jake, have fun over there. All right, I see Perry's on. Perry, we've been working ahead on the, on the items so that we can come back if you're able to participate. And we haven't, you haven't missed anything. We're gonna go back to the, to the presentation by Michael Dwyer on this school master plan four D, all right? Forty is the Sacred Heart master plan. We're gonna, we're gonna talk through that, make, decide on that, and then we go on to four E, which is the actual Sacred Heart plan for the, for the site. And there, and the reason that we held up is because they, they are on a deadline to be able to be approved so they can start the classes that we're gonna approve in August. So Michael, I, well, let's go ahead and Stephanie, there's, there's nothing else. Do you wanna go through a thumbnail on the overview from the staff report so Perry hears that?
Sure.
I wanna make sure that he gets the full, full briefing like we had.
Sure. And I'll, I'll make my brief presentation out that much briefer.
All right.
So the annual Sacred Heart Schools' master plan for 2021 has been submitted for the town as is done annually. They have discussed any changes to areas pertaining to land use, parking and circulation, business operations, or other criteria. Largest update being the indication to construct a new 4,000-square-foot kindergarten building. This item will be considered later on in the agenda as it does trigger the need for conditional use permit to be issued by the planning commission in accordance with the municipal code requirements for schools within the PFS, Public Facilities Zoning District. Largest update since, since last year is that their aquatics building has been constructed. The update also does speak to the towns, or excuse me, to the schools' response to the COVID-19 pandemic and their operations within all their schools. And then lastly, as was done last year, due to the continued COVID-19 pandemic and the ability for the school unfortunately to not operate at its full capacity, no formal transportation demand management or TDM program was conducted as part of the 2021 update. And lastly, just noting in regards to traffic and circulation, although a TDM monitoring program has not been completed, staff has not received any complaints or concerns or issues expressed by any of the neighbors as it relates to the school's limited capacity in its operations during this academic calendar year.
All right, thank you. So I'll go ahead and open a public hearing, again, one more time on item four D and we'll hear from the applicant, Representative Michael. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me well. First, I'd like to say thank you for supporting the temporary field lights. They were very instrumental in getting our students onto campus and getting moving and helping with their mental health. Second, I'd like to thank the commission and the planning department for all the support over the years. We have not been, we would not be able to do what we have done without that support. This was an unprecedented year in modern history. None of us had a playbook to foresee how to behave. So we erred on the side of cautious optimism, which we felt was in the best entrance, interest of our constituency. For the 2021 school year, we concentrated on protecting the community from COVID-19. The school pivoted to remote learning in mid-March. Sorry, there's a bug flying around here anyway. In mid-March 2020 and stayed remote until January 2021 when we incrementally added back kindergarten preschool, then first through fifth grades. Following that, in late February, we added in middle school and high school at 25%. And essentially right now are at 50%, although 100% of the students are participating. It's just on alternate days with one day break. What we're proposing is to build a 4,000-square-foot kindergarten, I put here modular building on the application, but it's a prefabricated mass timber structure. And that will house the kindergarteners because at present, their home is inside the preschool building. However, the state has not eased up on the distancing for, and capacity within the preschool classrooms. So therefore, we have a necessity to find a place for the kindergarteners. This school year, we had them at the high school and we relocated the high schoolers to outside tents, but that is not something that's sustainable. So our choice was to either build portables, a regular structure, or a prefab, and we'll get into that more in the CUP application. But as far as the additional mitigations that we went through with the COVID-19 situation, we added portable restrooms so that we can assign cohorts to restrooms and not have to have them all concentrated in one place. We, in, we had the PPE as discussed earlier, personal protective equipment and masks, shields, and even sneeze guards at every student's desk. And so, and air purifiers in every room. We retrofitted the HVAC in all buildings. I participated in a workplace violence prevention program for 11 years and it was run by a psychologist. And every year, he would tell us that we needed to celebrate because we had never had a loss of life. We were often criticized for the money we spent and for the measures we took to try to prevent the workplace violence, but we never had any, any deaths. And I thought, you know, this is the same thing that happened now with COVID. There were people who were critical of our stance to not open or to not open 100%. Sometimes it was allowed by code and other times it may not have been. But we stuck to our guns wanting to protect the community. It's not just us. We have nuns that live here on campus and then all of us interact with members of the Atherton community. So we decided to stay the course and we had no deaths. We also had cases of COVID on campus that we were unaware of and they were in classrooms for three days before it was detected. So what that proved is that the measures we took to prevent the spread worked because we had no community spread within the school. So this was something that was, something that we'd like to celebrate. What will the fall look like? In my report to you folks initially, we thought that we would have limited capacity for most grades. It's looking like some of the lower grades will be the ones with limited capacity and not the upper grades. And that's mostly due to the vaccinations which have changed most operation at schools today. So right now, we're looking at it being close to back to normal, but with some limited capacity, especially in preschool and kindergarten and probably first through third grades. As mentioned earlier, the TDM was suspended for this year. However, as I've said to you before, and it is my commitment to you and the community, we don't stop trying to improve the traffic. We implemented a new software program called School Pass and this particular package will allow us to do more efficient reunification of parent and students at the end of every school day. And we used it this year when we started to notice that cars were backing up onto the streets. We went in, analyzed the data, and were able to make a switch that within one week's time curtailed that problem with the traffic out onto the streets. So this is a good tool that we have and will continue to use it and implement our other programs to continue to drive down the trip count and the impact on neighboring streets. Our enrollment cap is 11.
Michael, a quick question. Do you, do you count traffic on each entrance? Because I drove over there today, or yes, day before yesterday, I guess. It seemed like I was counted on the front gate, but not on the side gates that I went in.
So I saw you. I said hello to you, but I don't think you recognized me in my.
That was, oh, that was you by the motorcycle. I know you are.
Exactly. So.
I said hi back, but I didn't know who I was talking to.
So yes, the, 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 these are Alpers cameras and they are at every entrance with the exception of our shop, which we will add to it, but the shop only allows certain staff members to enter.
It's not. The kindergarten entrance. I was, I was concerned about. I did see the cameras on the side. I wasn't sure if that was part of the trip count or not. Yeah. So I kind of, I kind of blew your trip count. I added three by going through three different entrances, so.
Yeah, you see the challenges we have?
Yeah, I do. All right, keep going.
Okay, so the enrollment cap, as you know, is 1196 and this year we anticipate achieving the 1196 as we thought we would last year. However, last year we lost 41 students, which was a huge impact to our budget. And then the cost of COVID-19 pretty much doubled our loss for the fiscal year. So we're very happy to have a yield of 1196 this year, which we believe we will achieve. And I just wanna remind the commission that, that it's not an exact science when you do admissions. It's more like spitballing. You, you send out the acceptances and then, or the admissions and then we either get accepted or we don't get accepted. And our goal is to always achieve the 1196, but most of the time we fall short. So I just wanted to remind you of how we do that. A couple of other things of note with our enrollment and that I did not include on the written plan, but I wanted. And that I did not include on the written plan, but I wanted to state publicly is that. Year over year, we have about twenty five percent of our student body is represented by Atherton residents. And thirty percent of our. Students here at the school are here on scholarship. And some of them. Get scholarships even to college when they leave here that we send them on. To these schools with the scholarships. So it's something that we have invested into the community and we wanted the commission to understand that. There is a slight change that will, will likely come to our operation. Starting this next school year, there's a new state law that requires schools to start after eight thirty. In the morning, this is, I think mostly for high school students. We are not bound by that law, but we are choosing to honor it so that we are consistent with peer schools. So that's pretty much a summary of the report that I provided. And I thank you for your time.
Alright, good. Right, any questions?
Not for me.
Alright, then we're ready. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then and bring it back for discussion and action by the commission as appropriate. Alright, so any, any, any thoughts on this? This is a, this is their normal update, as far as I can tell. Harry, I don't know if you've been a part of this before, but annually they give us this, this plan. So I'm ready. And if there's no questions, I'm ready to make a motion on this. Then I'll make a motion. I move the planning commission except for filing the two thousand twenty one annual master plan updated. The TDM monitoring report from the Sacred Heart Schools. And, and we'll get that TDM updated as they start taking the new year. Alright, there's a motion. Is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Boot and second. Roll call please, Stephanie.
Eric Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Tenali is excused. Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
You're on mute, Randy.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry guys, abstain.
Commissioner Narensek. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, Randy, you're gonna leave the meeting at this point, right?
I'm gonna leave all of you. I'm gonna miss you all, but I'm going to leave right now.
Alright, thank you, Randy. Thank you for your time and energy.
See you in a month.
Alright, hopefully.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. This plan has left the meeting because of a, was a potential conflict with the next item and as he always does, he does the ethical thing. So with that, uh, we'll go to item four E. Conditional use permit for Sacred Heart Schools and we'll go with the same process where we go with an overview from staff, followed by. Update from the applicant, followed by listening to anyone who would like to speak on the item and then bringing it back for the commission. You wanna go ahead and give us a overview?
Thank you. I'm Jake. Would you mind please calling up the. By plan or master plan so that we can zoom in on the location of the proposed building. It will be attachment and one of the attachments in the staff report. Thank you. Okay, so continuing on, um, at Sacred Heart Schools, one fifty Valparaiso. The commission is now being asked to consider the request for a conditional use permit. To allow the construction of a new building on the Sacred Heart Schools campus. Um, as conditional use permit or CUP is requested or is required, excuse me. For all new buildings in the PFS or Public Facilities School zoning district. The school is proposing to build one prefabricated, one-story, four thousand square foot permanent building. To accommodate its kindergarten students next year. The location of the building would be situated directly behind the existing Speaker Pavilion. This is located off Emily Avenue. And would require the demolition of an existing playground. So perhaps Jake, if you don't mind, please zoom in a bit. You can see the red building outlined with the black dash line here. Um, yep, there it is. Yes. And as the location of the proposed new four thousand square foot kindergarten building. The school's intent to construct this building is to comply with state licensing. Which is requiring preschoolers and kindergarteners to be separated. Currently, those students share a building. Should such mandates change in the future? The building has preliminarily been identified for potential future programming spaces for the upper grades of one through eight. Construction of the building itself would not increase the school's current projected enrollment. So the, the building would be accessed off the existing drive and parking lot there. To the right of it, as you can see on the screen off of Emily Avenue. And no proposed changes to that parking or existing parking or circulation plan. Noted by that number twenty in the bottom right-hand corner on the screen are proposed as part of the building construction. The one item of public comment has been received on the proposed conditional use permit and this was included as an attachment. To the staff report in the packet that was publicly distributed. Um, it is noted that any construction does require a construction and traffic management plan. To be reviewed and approved by the town prior to any permit issuance. So for the more detailed reasons as outlined in the staff report. The request has determined to be exempt both from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. And as conditioned to meet the two required findings. That the planning commission must make in order to grant approval of the requested CUP.
Alright, and, and Stephanie, well, maybe I'll ask them. I'm, I'm. I'm interested in the, the actual access to the building off the parking lot and the route on that, but I'll wait for the applicant to give me an update. Any, any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open the public comment section and we'll hear from the applicant again. Michael, are you up again?
Thank you once again for this opportunity. Also on the call this evening representing Sacred Heart Schools. Application are Afshah Ali, the project architect from ADIS Architecture and Larson. From Excel Construction representing Timber Quest, the mass timber manufacturing as well. I will make a brief appeal in support of our application. And the three of us will be available should you have any questions about the project. I would like to apologize for having to rush with the appeal. To add the prefabricated kindergarten building. Ordinarily, we would have had more time to vet the project and file timely. However, we, when we found out is when we started the process, which was about a month and a half ago. And it's a very quick process and one that. Didn't leave us many options. Just this week, we also learned that the state and county are thinking about keeping. Class sizes for the younger students reduced because of. The lack of vaccine for these students. So we anticipate at least the first semester. To have the requirement legally to keep the. Student capacity low and we are planning on that for both preschool and kindergarten at this time. Which is what necessitates the need for us to add to the classroom structures. We basically had three options, which I will articulate here in a moment. But one of them was to install portable classrooms. Or build a traditional building. So that was number two. And number three is to find some sort of modular or prefabricated structure. So when you look at all the factors, so one of them being neighbor impact. And disruption to the Sacred Heart Campus along with logistics. When you combine those things, you look at. Three of those things, the neighbor impact, the disruption to the campus and logistics, they all have similar consequences. With two exceptions. So one exception would be that portables would require more. Activity on campus would require more activity on surrounding streets. And would require them to come back a second time to pick up the portables. They would all need a foundation. So a building needs a found, a traditional building needs a foundation, the portables need a foundation. And a prefabricated building needs a foundation. So that's a fed a complete. It would happen regardless. So when we looked at this and then we looked at the expenditure. The expenditure for portables is approximately five hundred thousand dollars. That is a five hundred thousand dollar one-year expense. And then everything gets written off. That is not a fiscally responsible spend if you have the option to do something else. A, a standard building would cost about four million. The prefabricated building will cost us between two point three. Two point four million and will last probably twenty to thirty years. This makes more sense for our community and we are able to capitalize the item and depreciate it along the way. The clear choice for less neighborhood impact and fiscal responsibility is to add. The prefabricated building. It, it is clearly more viable for us and less impactful to the neighborhood. At this time, we are seeking approval for a conditional use permit to add. A structure just under four thousand square feet. It's three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three square feet. Of mass timber prefabricated panels for the kindergarten building at Sacred Heart Campus. Behind and west of Speaker Gymnasium. And Commissioner Lane, you had asked a question about where the students would access that building.
Right, Jake, will you bring up the map again? I had a couple of questions relative to access in general, maybe I can also speak to it too. Yes, I'm sure you're on mute, just so you know, and if you wanted to talk.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I can.
Yeah, you can walk us through her. There you go. Thank you, Jake.
So I'm, I'm gonna use a annotate to show how we can access. As you can see that the. The building with the bubble, right, is the new four thousand square feet building we are adding. And this is the access.
Alright, Jake, go ahead and load up a little bit so it's easier to see. Thank you, there. Yeah, that's good. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm gonna grab it. So this is the entry to the, to the campus and there is a drop off. Somewhere here. Um, we are proposing the access to the building from this side. This is all paved area, so there is no work as such, other than connecting. The buildings itself to a small portion. All the main entrances doors are on this side. To the classroom.
Is there any fencing behind the building to protect from the, from the pool?
On this side, there is an existing fence. Um, that's what you're asking, right? On the backside of the building and there is a fence by the basketball court.
Okay, and the pool, the pool is probably two, three hundred yards away on the other side of campus.
Okay, alright, good. Thank you.
Sure. Try to erase all this.
So will it, will the traffic pattern change at all? For this compared to what it is today?
No, this is, would be the standard drop off for the kindergarten students.
And as brought up in the, by the letter from Barry Robbins, where, where he talks about the. The, the construction vehicle traffic on, on, on the. On the street and. Off of Valparaiso, how are you, how are you intending to address that?
So I'll, I'll start it and then ask Matt Larson from Excel to continue it. So. By choosing to do the prefabricated building, the use of construction traffic. Is cut in half, if not even less than standard. Delivery and construction of a building. They will have two deliveries of material. And that's it. The other, the other impact might be concrete that is, is brought in in cement mixers. However, we plan on distributing the dirt internally on campus, so that should mitigate that traffic. As well as. Them assigning a flagman at Valparaiso and Emily if that becomes necessary. But I will ask Matt to articulate their traffic plan.
Yeah, we've, we've submitted a traffic plan with the building permit application. And showing the, the traffic routes, as Mike said, spot on, you know, it's a lot fewer deliveries than traditional. Construction project would be. We're very familiar with the hours of work. We've completed a. Projects on campus, significant projects on campus very recently. So we're familiar with the community and all the work rules and sensitivity around in. Around traffic. All the delivery drivers are issued notices about time, you know, no deliveries on holidays, nothing before eight AM. All that good thing. So obviously, you know, no construction project is ever without a little bit of traffic and impact. So we're, we're doing our best to mitigate that through both the, the use of the prefabrication as well as just best management practices.
Yeah, the one, the one issue I would, I, I, I don't know how it would be addressed specifically is when you're coming off of. Of a meal. If the natural tendency would be to have a, a left turn off of. Off that, off that street on the main drag to go back out to El Camino. And that's a, that's a virtually impossible place to go to turn left for a big vehicle. It's very tough. And then if they leave meal and they leave the property going left, then they're in the neighborhood and they're gonna go back down. Alongside Menlo School and I'm gonna have a tendency to turn left. It's a really bad place. There's, there's a number of ingress, egress issues with that particular side of the school. The other side has lights and things like that. So like, I don't know if their trucks can be turned and left and left. And then, and then use the light on the other side of the school. But it just seems like that has to be thought through a little bit.
So there's no traffic light. At the other side of the school. It's a similar, it's a similar intersection.
It's got better view lines though.
Yeah.
And it's farther away from the El Camino Real, which gives them a little more time for spacing.
True, although it's proximity to Menlo School where there is a light helps to have the traffic slow down a bit. Before getting to Emily. I do agree that there is a blind turn there and, and perhaps a flag. A flag person is required, but we will definitely watch this closely. My concern with them going the other direction and going to Alejandra, which is definitely an alternative. Is that there's a lot of construction on Alejandra right now and I have trouble getting by in my personal vehicle.
Right, I have no problem on the MGA, but on my regular, on my other, other vehicle, it would have been a problem. You're right. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I just think it's gonna be an issue that, that's been brought up by a neighbor and it's something to watch. And that, that, that turn on Valparaiso is gonna be an issue for sure. So just, just come up with a plan B on that.
Definitely.
Anything else? You know, architecturally, it doesn't match any of the other buildings you have on a site, but you know, maybe they can, maybe they can paint on it.
We, the the color scheme that we're using for the building will will match the architecture and for both both the speaker building and the neighboring Z building or Bergeron. So I think I think we're okay there.
All right. All right, anything else then?
Not for me.
Afshah, Matt, anything else?
No, we're just, we're excited about it. So it's a it's a great project to be involved in, so we're we're excited about it.
Any questions of anyone else in the commission? Nobody's raising their hand, so I'm, is there anyone, anyone else? Doesn't look like anybody else is not part of this process is here to speak on it. Unless Ralph, you've got a brilliant insight for us. Okay, then I'll go ahead and I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for for the commission and for discussion and action as appropriate. I'm more comfortable now after hearing some of the the pathways. Because I, when I drove the side, I was I was looking in there going like, ah, how are the kids gonna get there? But that makes sense to me now. That was the only question I had that was wasn't clear when I went on the went on the went on the site. And Michael, now that I now that you mentioned it, I waved that you waved at me and I said hi and I didn't even didn't even connect the dot.
Yeah, that's what it looked like. You know, we're not in the the public comment anymore. But one of the reasons for putting the building behind Speaker was to lessen the impact to the neighborhood. So it was it was strategic.
Yeah, I I figured that too. All right, Perry and Nancy, have you had any comments or are you ready to make a motion?
No, everything's okay that I can see.
You okay or? You up to speed?
Did you want me to make the motion? I have to hunt for it here.
Okay, I'm ready.
What page is it on? Oh, here it is. Okay, I find my place now. I moved that the planning commission determine that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guideline section one five three one four. Minor additions to school and that the planning commission make the findings recommended in the staff report and approve the conditional use permit for Sacred Heart Schools kindergarten classrooms building project with the conditions as stated in the draft condition use certificate, permit certificate.
All right, moved and Perry, I'll second, all right? That's good. Second. All right, Stephanie, you want to give us a roll call?
Carol Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb has recused himself. Commissioner Narensec.
All right, thank Perry, thank you for coming. And I know that Michael does because he was worried about being able to pass this. So I I think, Perry, we're gonna double your pay tonight. Oh, oh, well, that doesn't.
I was gonna, I was gonna cut it in half, actually. But Eric.
I think the math is the same.
Zero point zero.
Eric, I do have, I do have a follow-up, which is the public comment from Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
So it sounds like he has a general concern with traffic in that area, not just about this particular project. So two things. First of all, someone should get back to Mr. Robbins. And, you know, with a decision advising him of of the commission's action. And then he should also be invited to make his suggestion here or concern known to either us or to the town. Because when people put these comments in, I want to make sure that there's some feedback to them to know so that everyone knows that we do take your comments into consideration.
So, Michael, I'll, I think that's appropriate for you to do the follow-up, you know, just as I think normally would just tell you to be a good neighbor and and reach out and maybe Stephanie can help you do that.
Okay, happy to do so.
If and when there's an issue. All right, all right, good. That's that's it for that that item. Perry, we did the we did the new business. Quick staff report. Stephanie, is there anything that you want to highlight on that staff report for Perry?
I'm sorry, Charlie, your video at least froze up for me a bit. I didn't hear the beginning.
I said, is there anything on staff report that you want to update Perry on, or you can do that on online, offline?
Sure. I do not have anything additional to report other than the introduction of our new assistant planner, Ralph Robinson.
All right, good. Yeah, we have a new assistant planner. That's what that's what Ralph is, Perry.
Welcome, welcome. And Mr. Garcia, thank you for all your help so far.
Thank you, Perry.
Yeah, send your bill, send your bill over to, where's the new place, Woodside, wherever you're.
No, I'm I'm sending all my bills to Stephanie. She looks so.
All right, item seven, commissioner, report, anything to report? I'm this time. All right, I've been I've been a very quiet, good boy. All right, then we item eight is a motion to to adjourn, which is such a is usually such a struggle, Ralph, just so you know. We this with this deciding could take like ten, fifteen minutes, so it's so. All right, need a motion?
I'm gonna earn my pay and move that we adjourn today's meeting.
Oh, man, double, triple the pay, triple the pay.
I'll second it, sure.
Good, I'll third it. All right, roll call, please.
Carol Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli is excused. Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb has left the meeting and Commissioner Narensec.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you all for coming to the party. We'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Ralph, don't forget about that quiz next week. We'll talk to you soon.
I'll bet right in. Take it.
All right, thank you.
Jake, thank you again. Jake, shoot, I should have gotten your autograph. I I definitely want to add it to my collection. I'll talk to you soon. Bye-bye.
Night.
All right, bye-bye.